Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford. This is the May 23 Plan and zoning meeting. I will start with roll call and then turn it over to our chair. Patrick Carrier?
Here.
We have Mike Reboulis, I know for the record, is absent. Scott Halsted is absent. Matt Hupbogner?
Here.
Ina St. James?
Here.
Liz Sanford?
Here.
James Rackliff?
Here.
And Mike Walsh?
Here.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's Ina St. James. Welcome to Town Farmington Plan and Zoning Meeting, May 23, 2020. James and Mike Walsh, both of you will be voting members this evening. All right, and then with Scott being absent, Matt H., will you do the honor of be the acting secretary this evening?
Yes, happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's start with the legal notice then.
So notices hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing Monday, May 23, 2022 at 7:00 PM on the following applications. Amber and Michael Sperrito, application for special permit to raise 14 hens for property located at 7 Orchard Road, R20 Zone. And Patricia Ravell and David Donaldson, application for special permit for expansion of home in the Ridgeline Protection Area for property located at 17 Pinnacle Ridge Road, R40 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 1 Montee Drive, Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website listed here. A copy of this proposal is online listed at the link in the notice, or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 6th day of May, 2022, Town Plan and Zoning Commission and St. James Chair.
Thank you. All right, so we have a few new business items to get through and then a public hearing. The first item in front of us is an application from Loretto Sign Group regarding an application for property at 5 Mill Street. And we have someone on mine, Shannon?
We actually have someone here with us.
Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Come on up to the podium. I can scroll through as you're ready.
Perfect. I'm Allison Ibbotson with Laura Tano Sign Group at 1 Tremco Drive, Terryville. And also, I do have people on the call as well, representative from Dollar Tree, which is Jeremy Strivola, and also representative from Anchor Signs Valerie Oking. And this first page here shows all the locations of the proposed signs. Sign A is a wall sign, which is facing west. And the total square footage is 39.83 square feet. It's 24-inch letters. And then there's a matching set on the left elevation facing north. And this is sign C, which is a reface from the Walgreens blade sign to now read Dollar Tree. And this is also, the stonework is already there for the monument sign. We're just adding the letters to both sides of the monument. And then we're re-skinning the existing awnings.
All set?
I am all set.
Thank you. Thank you, Allison. All right, commissioners. Let's start with questions. Matt?
It just administrative one for me. I think this came in one way, but it was presented differently at the ADRC and they approved that. Is that correct?
Correct. This reflects the changes that ADRC agreed to. So yes, they did. They worked really hard with ADRC last Thursday evening and reduced the signs, got it centered, and they're happy with the changes that you see here.
Great. No, that makes sense. I appreciate that. That's good. No questions.
Thank you. Patrick?
I was gonna ask the same question, so thank you. No questions.
All right, Liz?
Um, excuse me, my one question is, color is the standard Dollar Tree color?
Yes, it's their standard brand.
Okay.
Yep.
Kind of a bright green.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. And James?
Just to confirm, non-illuminated all of them, correct?
So the, the letters on the building are non-illuminated. The, there is existing lighting on the blade sign, which will remain the same.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions.
I'm going to provide one point of note on that. Just there are, for the previous Walgreens sign, there had been two spotlights mounted on the canopy pointing up towards the building signs. The spotlights are being removed and they're putting an LED bar on. It'll be 4,000 Kelvin is the color temperature maximum. And they're also including a dimmer switch so that if there's issue with the intensity, then they will be able to adjust it.
Awesome.
And that's for both wall-mounted signs. And that was an addition that happened on Thursday evening.
Thanks for the clarification.
Absolutely.
All set, James?
All set.
All right, and Mike Walsh?
No questions.
Okay. I do not have any questions. My questions were resolved with the ADRC comment. All right, so thank you for all the work. And complying with the request from ADRC, I think we're probably ready to vote on it unless we have last minute questions? No? Okay. So I need a motion in a second, please.
Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make the motion to approve the, sorry, the sign application for Dollar Tree by Loretto Sign Group at 5 Mill Street.
A second.
Okay. I'm sorry. Everyone know what we're voting on? All good? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Next item in front of us is an application from Scott's Town Line Mobile, 435 Main Street.
Yes, and this presenter is online.
Okay.
Carolyn, if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself, please, and your address for the record, and then I will scroll through your presentation as you request.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Parker. My address is 3 Laurion Avenue, Worcester, Massachusetts, 01606.
Okay, go ahead with your presentation.
Okay. All right. So basically, we were in front of you in 2020 for another mobile station at 244 Farmington Avenue to install what we call the synergy components at the mobile gas station. So this is similar to the other one where we're going to have two waves and then two blades, and then we'll have koalas, and then there will be number wedges that will be coming off the side of the columns to let people know what pump they're at. Pretty straightforward. I don't know if you have any questions?
Shannon, this is Farmington or Unionville?
Hang on a second. I'm just thinking. I gotta think. For, it's right at, it's the Farmington Town Line, sorry.
Okay.
435 Main Street.
And we've been farming all, that's why, okay.
I've got them on both, both sides of town, so.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm so confused. What, where are we talking?
So 435 Main Street, I believe it's at the, it's at the split where
Yeah.
It's down towards Plano.
Okay, now I know. I was trying to figure it out.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. All right, commissioners, questions? Matt?
It just one for me. Can you just confirm there's no advertisements as part of this application?
Yes, that was stated. I read the comments. There will not be any advertising.
Great, thank you. No further questions.
Patrick?
And yeah, I'm reading here. It said, no, so no illumination is proposed and no LED signage, so.
Nothing is illuminated. It's, there's no illumination at all.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this is just a, ask any question. What are the koala, what are the purposes of the koalas? Also, by the way, love the name.
Yeah, because they're hugging the column. So basically, what they're doing is they're trying to take all the, you know, the stop your engine, you know, shut off your engine, all this other stuff, taking it off the dispenser and putting it onto the koalas. So it's, you know, your safety, your safety things. I have something I didn't include it, but I can show. It wasn't part of my application, but if you see, if you, I don't know if you can zoom in on that, but it'll basically have your safety information, no smoking, shut off your engine, that type of stuff.
Okay.
So they're taking it off the dispenser and putting it there.
Okay, seems clear. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And James?
No questions.
And Mike?
No questions.
I do not have any questions either. Seems pretty straightforward. All right, um, I need a motion in a second. We're both, please.
Liz Sanford, I move that we accept the sign application for the mobile from Scott's. Approve, I said it again, I'm sorry. Sorry, let me start all over again. I move that we approve the sign application for the mobile from Scott's Town Line Mobile at 435 Main Street.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Next item is application from Farmington Board of Education for an expansion to IR Cafeteria.
Good evening. Was here last April, bringing you conceptual plans for an expansion to the Irving Robbins Cafeteria, which passed referendum.
I'm going to interrupt. We need your, your name, and you can use your work address for the record.
Sam Kilpatrick, Director of School Facilities, 1 Montee Drive, Farmington, Connecticut.
Welcome.
So I was here last year presenting conceptual plans for the Irving Robbins Cafeteria, which passed referendum later in April. At this point, we have design, construction documents ready that started the process of review within the town staff. Any notes that have come forward were easily be able to take care of within the project. There's no setback issues or anything else with this. So it's approximately 1,850 square foot addition. The goal was to get 260 addition capacity within the cafeteria so that we could go to three lunch waves. We were able to accomplish that within the square footage. If there's anything else I can add for that.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Yeah, we'll go through the questions. Thank you, Sam. All right, Matt, questions?
Just, just one. How many students per, per lunch wave?
We were able to accomplish 264 seats, I believe.
Okay, great. No, I didn't have any other questions. Thank you.
I'm sorry, it was 268.
268, great, thank you.
Additional or total?
Total. So currently, it's 160.
Got it, thanks.
So you're going from four lunch waves to three?
Yes.
And Patrick?
I mean, so one question is, I see there was comments from engineering, and you said these have been taken care of. I guess they're just on drainage and a light pole?
The design team has reviewed all the notes and take no exception. They said none of them are any issue. We'll, we'll be able to take care of them.
Okay, thank you.
So work with town staff, right? Liz?
Um, the only other thing, my question is, is the size of the patio going to be reduced? Or is, that's where the addition is going?
That is where the addition is going, and it will be, will have to be reconfigured due to budget constraints. We're going to try and save what we can of what's there for the patio stone and reuse that in a, in a reconfiguration around the new addition.
Okay.
The, the improvement there is that we'll have a concrete slab underneath it. Right now, it's on, on sand.
Okay. No, it sounds great. And so kids don't have to eat at 10:30. It's probably a good move to get through lunch with them.
It will be appreciated, for sure.
James?
No questions.
And Mike?
No questions.
I do not have any questions either. It sounds like it's, there's a need and like Liz said, I will be appreciated by all. Okay, so you're working with town staff. Unless we have last minute questions, who wants to make a motion in a second?
Does James Rackliff make the motion to approve the site plan application for the addition to the cafeteria by the Farmington Board of Education at 20 Wolf Pit Road, IR?
Patrick Carrier, a second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. You're all set. Sam, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, AMG Retail. It's a modification of a prior special permit for ours. Who do we have?
I'm supposed to have Samantha. Let me see if I can find her online anywhere. I'm not seeing her on the phone at the moment. We can hold on this one and then come back. I did exchange emails with her as recently as this morning.
Okay, so we'll move on and, yeah, that's fine. All right, the next item is a application, let's see here, from BHNV 231 LLC.
Yes, Frank Cathcart.
Good evening. Frank Cathcart, C-A-T-H-C-A-R-T, 231 Farmington Avenue. Farmington is my office address. This is an application to modify a special permit, which dates from 2001. The property is in a PR zone, and the special permit for medical offices was 7,200 square feet slash eight doctors. After submitting the initial application and speaking with the Town Planner's Office, we well, resubmitted some documentation. And the net of it is that we are reducing the request for square footage from the initial down to a figure of totaling 10,045 square feet. I, for me anyway, who is mathematically impaired, the best way for me to look at it was to take the total square footage of the building, which is 38,768 square feet, deduct from that the medical office space, both occupied and proposed, and that comes out to 10,045 square feet, the difference being 28,722, 23 square feet for non-medical and vacant space. Then, taking the parking requirements for those square footage figures, coming up with required parking for the medical, 67, the non-medical, 128, totaling 195 parking spaces. Right now, we have 196 parking spaces. So we just fit into the parameters for parking for the space. So that's, again, mathematically how we came up with the request for the 10,045. And it just happens to fit in with the vacancies that we have, for which we have all of a sudden, two proposed tenants for medical usage. Right now, there's an endodontist, a doctor, a dentist, excuse me, endodontist, dentist, and a they share space, but one's a PhD and one's a not credentialed, or I don't know what her credential is, mental health services. They're proposed, and we have a lease in place now with a neuropsychologist who's doing the build-out. And the two tenants who are looking at space right now, one's a chiropractor, excuse me, and the other is a pediatric dentist. As far as the number of doctors or treating people is concerned, right now, there are five. The pediatric dentist is a solo. The chiropractor is a solo. And the neuropsychologist, quite honestly, I'm not sure. We know there's one PhD. He has an office in Cheshire. This is kind of a satellite or additional office. We're anticipating that it won't be any more than he as the full doctor. If I look at the regs, it says part-time doctors. You can put two or three together to come up with a full-time 40-hour. We believe that that's what it's going to be. So in addition to the additional square footage, and I kind of did this on a pro-rata basis, we would ask that the number of doctors be up to 12 to go along with the square footage. The floor plan, which the architect drew up for us is on the monitor right now, showing the three stories of the building. The broken down by color into the occupied non-medical, occupied medical, proposed medical, and vacancies. One of the vacant spaces just today, in fact, is being leased to an attorney. The other two were in the process of negotiating, and they're being held in abeyance until the commission decides on this application, because the new ones would put us over the 7,200.
Shannon, I was going to ask you if you can show us which building this is. You're doing your math for us?
I was just checking the number of doctors. I can, I don't know if I dropped an arrow on this one. I can easily bring this up. Yeah, let me just go online to our
Thank you.
GIS, just give me one sec. Sorry, I did not get a chance to do that part.
It's okay.
What you'll see on the map is that the Red Cross building, which is, if you're facing the building, is to the left. Actually, the property almost surrounds 231, extends it on the back and wraps around. And then if you're looking at the building on the right, on the road, there's a small parcel that's owned by the state of Connecticut. And actually, on the other side, where the Farmington building is, there's actually another very small plot that's labeled on the GIS NetCo.
So this is, 231 is up on the screen. And across from it is Lowman's Plaza. So the building is at a traffic signal.
Yes, I forgot to mention. I apologize. There is a traffic light at the, at the property.
From a traffic standpoint, there's no concern from, there's no exterior changes. The only concern was making sure there was sufficient parking.
Yep. And the number of doctors is okay within our regulations?
So, Dr., so I just did the math real quick. The 10,045 square feet would be the total medical. So the 7,200 that was previously approved, plus the reduced request presented this evening is 2,845, to give us a total of 10,045 square feet. At 150 square, square footage per space requires 67 spaces. So the regulation says each doctor, there shall be six spaces allocated for each full-time doctor, which would really be 11 full-time doctors rather than the 12 that are requested.
I think I came out at 11.6, so I rounded up.
We don't round up with parking.
Caught me.
It's all good. All right, so we're good, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, this revised. They, they've, Mr. Cathcart and their architect worked with Bruce and I over the last three, four business days to modify the request and reduce it so that it's zoning compliant.
Perfect. Thank you. Yes, those are great words. Thank you.
Zoning compliant, right?
I know. Thank you for the presentation. Do you have more to add, or I can turn it over?
That's it.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, Matt, questions?
Yeah, no, I, I follow the updated square feet and the updated number of doctors. So the difference between the 10,000 square feet today versus the 12,000, so what's going in that sort of 2,000 or 2,800 difference? Or is it still just open at this point?
It's vacant.
Okay, got it. Okay. No, I think I'm good. Thank you.
There are two, there will be two vacant spaces left in the building.
Right.
But there's sufficient parking to tenant them as general office.
Right.
They do not have to remain, right, in order to accommodate this medical use, they do not have to remain vacant.
Right, no, understood. Okay, good. That, that's, I was just trying to clarify too. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, questions?
Well, yeah, so what happens if the number of doctors do change? So we, so he's approved for, let's say he's approved, it's for a certain number, which is 12. Does, yeah, do they have to come back, or how does that work?
So if they change the, the square footage of medical office or the number of full-time doctors, typically, number of full-time doctors, we're not necessarily going to
Right.
catch, right? And, and it does say that if they are part-time, you can have, you know, one doctor that's working two days a week and another doctor working three days a week, they, they count as one.
Right.
So that is the way it's worded in the reg. We're not necessarily going to
Yeah.
be aware of that unless there starts to be a notable parking issue. Square footage, we will, because building permit and tenant fit-outs typically will, typically, they'll need to be a tenant fit-out. There'll be enough changes that warrant a building permit. It'll come through our office, which is where, where this started.
No more questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Liz?
No, no questions. Thank you.
No questions.
No, and Mike?
No questions.
Okay. Do we need to, with our motion, do we need to include the 12 and?
If the commission has a preference, yes, please.
Do we?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so everyone know what we're voting on? Okay. I need a motion in a second, please.
I'll, I'll go.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification of prior special permit approval to increase medical office space and wait. Wait, well, we don't need a wave parking requirement anymore, right? Is that?
Correct.
Right.
Not waving anything.
So my motion is to modify the prior special permit approval to increase medical office space from, and I'll just read the numbers here, right, 7, 7,200 square feet to 10,045 square feet, and from eight doctors to 12 doctors.
Second?
Liz Sanford, second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's unanimous. We're all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Towne.
And my job, good questions, right? We have AMG, her.
I got Bruce's online, taking a look and yeah, so far, that, that does not appear.
Okay. We will continue. All right, we have an application to accept from Honeyman Builders LLC. We need a motion in a second, please.
James Rackliff, I make a motion to accept the application for two-lot subdivision of 17 Burlington Road, R20 Zone, and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of June 20, 2022.
Second?
Liz Sanford, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is Sign Pro Incorporated with a sign application for property located at 32 Main Street.
And we've got Tracy Becker on the phone.
And this is Main Street Farmington, right?
We've seen Tracy before.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
You have.
Oh, hang on, let me just open up these files. Tracy, go ahead. We've got the 32 Main Street up for you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So as you are aware, M&amp;T Bank has received to purchase People's in the process of converting all of the United Bank branches to M&amp;T Bank branches. And our next two are 32 Main Street in Farmington, and our next application, which you'll hear in about 10 minutes, I imagine, for 1845 Farmington Avenue in Unionville. So for the Main Street location, we are just changing the freestanding sign panels from People's United Bank to a green background, white lettering, yellow border. to a green background, white lettering, yellow border at the bottom for M and T Bank. So I think if you go down, there we go. There it is. So it will look remarkably the same, except it will have the green background and white lettering with the gold. They call the energy beams. So. Oh, I'm sorry. And then the enter and exit directional signs, we're going to be moving to the inside edges of the driveway. Right now, they're both on the outer edges. We're going to be moving them to the inner edges. So there you go. So where enter and exit are being shown there with the arrows, we're gonna just get them out of the shrubbery and put them where people can actually see them. And it also makes for a nice symmetrical view of the front of the building as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, Commissioners, questions for Tracy? Oh, Matt?
None. And this seems pretty like for like to me, so no questions.
Yeah, the enter and exit, are they moving forwards and backwards from Main Street or side to side when they're coming out of the bushes?
They're just gonna move to side. So right now, they're on the edges of the property. They're gonna be moving more towards the center of the property. So they're in the shrubs now and they're gonna move to the inside edges of the driveways.
Okay, yeah, so further away from Main Street, is that correct?
So they're not gonna move any further back from Main Street. They're just gonna be moving left to right if you're looking at the front of the building.
Okay, to the other side of each driveway.
Okay, got it.
Right, so that it's it's in the center island area rather than out on the perimeter edges.
Correct. That's a much better way of saying it, Shannon. Thank you.
Oh, just, just not better, just different.
It's been a long Monday. Let's put it that way.
You said a mouthful.
Sorry, I don't mean to cut you.
No, no problem. Yeah, no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Historic district had no problems with it, correct? So.
Correct. This was approved with the historic district last Tuesday.
That's great. No questions.
And James?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions.
I am all set also. It seems pretty straightforward. We need a motion in a second, please.
Liz Sanford. Move that we approve the sign application to change People's Bank sign to M and T Bank at 32 Main Streets by Sign Pro Inc.
Second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we're all set, unanimous. Next up, thank you, Tracy. Next application is for the Unionville branch at 1845 Farmington Ave.
Correct. So we have a very similar app here. We will be changing the to the very same panels that you just saw on Main Street. And I believe this location has some pin mount letters on the building, similar to what's there now, except they will, again, instead of People's United.
So one for one, exactly the same, okay?
Exactly, yep. Just the peripheral signage, you know, the clearance signs and things like that at this location.
Thank you.
That's it.
Alright, Matt?
No, no questions.
Patrick?
No questions.
Liz?
Just out of curiosity, is the ATM gonna still be blue or is it gonna go green too?
It will go green.
Might as well be consistent.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
James?
No questions. No questions.
Okay, awesome. Alright, motion in a second, please.
Yeah, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'm sorry, I saw you saying my name.
No, that's perfect.
Yeah, so I'd like to move to approve the sign application by Sign Pro Inc. at 1845 Farmington Avenue from a People's Bank sign to an M and T Bank sign.
Second?
Go ahead, ladies first.
Liz Sanford, second. Oh my, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, you're all set, Tracy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
I know, I know, on Zoom, it's always like, this is amazing. Watching this?
This is lightning speed. This is great. So Bruce is, Bruce is working to try and track down the applicant for the AMG, so.
Is it okay to start public hearing?
Yeah, but once we start, we'll have to finish and then just check in with them, but I'm not seeing anyone for that AMG application on, so. He's gonna work on it for us.
Yep, thank you, and thank you, Bruce. Alright, everyone, now we're gonna turn to the.
Right, yeah, he literally just got on, so we'll go ahead and indulge, just.
Alright.
Do that one. Yeah, he just got her.
It would be a long wait, otherwise.
It would be a long wait. Samantha, if you're ready, we'll take your application now.
Yes, I'm sorry about that, guys.
No problem.
AMG Retail, right?
It is. So there really isn't. Site plan, so we know where we are at 286. Samantha, if you could go ahead and introduce yourself and explain which, what the request is with your application this evening to the commission.
Hi, everyone. My name is Samantha Rodriguez. I'm the Licensing and Insurance Compliance Coordinator for Atlantis. What we're looking to do, we just recently remodeled the location, gave it a little bit more of a modern look. And what we're looking to do is extend our operating hours from what they are currently to a 24-hour operation in town.
That's all it is, right?
Correct. Samantha, there's no change, there's no lighting changes, there's no site plan changes, there's no building changes, correct?
Nope, all of that was already permitted and actually completed, but this specific application is just for the increase in the hours to 24 hours.
And what are your hours today?
I believe they are 5 to 10. 5:30 to 10.
That may be where they're operating. I believe they're approved currently for 5 to midnight. I believe that's what they're currently approved for, but that's okay.
Yeah, I believe, I believe when the COVID pandemic, we decreased our hours just due to not having enough employees. But I can clarify, you know, with that, just to make sure that we are, you know, operating the hours of 5:30 to 10. And then if we are operating to midnight, which I don't think we are, but I'm pretty sure it's 5:30 to 10.
Thank you, that's fine. You don't have to research that. We're all set. Thank you, Samantha. Alright, Commissioners, how do we feel about allowing 24-hour operation? Matt?
This is a question for me. So why the increase in hours at this point to go, you know, from, you know, what's happening from 10 a.m. to, or 10 p.m. to 5 a.m.?
Um, well, to be honest with you guys, I, I think with a lot of our many other locations that we own and operate in the New England area, many of them are 24 hours. Many of them, we did see an increase in sales, an increase in amount of people that are changing the hours that they're coming in. You know, whether it's the younger generation, the older generation, a lot of them don't want to come in during business hours because of COVID, because of how busy it is, because of the lifted mask mandate. So it really gives our, our customers a chance to come in at any, you know, any different hours. I'll speak for myself. I know my husband is a utility worker and at, you know, 3 o'clock in the morning when he's on his way home, if he wants a coffee before he comes home to go to bed, it's very hard for him to find a gas station that's open in the middle of the night or a Dunkin' Donuts or something like that. So it opens the doors to a whole new, you know, a whole new perspective for other people, a whole new customer, customer line. And it's something that Atlantis really opened up as far as during the pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good for now. Thank you.
Alright, how about you, Patrick?
So, yeah, so I was reading through this and there's one other property that is permitted in town, right?
Correct. The Cumberland Farms was originally approved for 5 to midnight and then their hours were expanded. They came in just as, as these folks are doing in 2017 to change their hours to 24-hour operation. And again, during COVID, they've redacted those hours. I don't believe they've come back to 24-hour at this point in time. We did check in with the police department just to see if they had information on something that we didn't happen to have. And it seemed to align that Cumberland had been open 24 hours. They also believe there had been one on Farmington Ave towards UConn Hospital had been open 24 hours at one point. But currently, none of the gas stations are 24. But they could at any, the permission's there, so they could change it and go back at any point.
Right. And one of the conditions on that, so I was reading through here is the, as I understand it, is that deliveries are not allowed, right?
Correct.
Between the hours of midnight and 5 a.m.?
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, is that something that would be an issue is my question, I guess?
No, we don't typically get deliveries. Our deliveries and our vendors are typically limited to before 7 p.m. That's always been something, even when General Equity, I worked with General Equities and Food Bag prior to Atlantis, when Atlantis took over. That's always been a security measure for us. We're very coherent on that safety measure and we typically lock the doors and we have a security, you know, a security policy and procedure in certain way that we let our employees and our customers in and out of the building after a certain hour. I believe it's 9 p.m. we lock our doors and then we buzz them in from there.
Okay, and I see to the east, there's an apartment complex. Is that, how can, is it visible from the apartment complex?
So the apartment complex is off of, so if you're familiar with this portion of Route 10, then this is the spur going up to, for Route 6. The apartment complex is over here off the edge. It's there up, it's the apartment complex that is up, so it's quite elevated compared to this location.
They're seeing streetlights and all kinds of.
They're, they're above it.
Okay.
Correct, yeah.
No further questions, thanks.
Thank you. Liz?
No, I was curious about that. And then there, that other house on the other side of Colt Highway, I know that is also fairly high and it's, there's not any visibility down to that, is there? That number 45, is that number 45?
Believe so, I just, because I think you've, I'm pretty sure Colt Highway, you go up in the back and then come back down. I don't believe it's the same elevation. I think there's an elevation change there.
Okay, and then once a special permission is granted for these 24 hours, it's always available for that property owner's use?
Correct, unless there's unusual problems with it that is requiring, you know, zoning enforcement or other action to be taken, then it can be rescinded, but it would have to be with cause.
Okay, well, that's, that's my only question.
Thank you. James?
No questions.
And Mike?
No questions.
Alright, I do not have any new questions either. Alright, any final questions for Samantha? We're ready for motion. We're good?
The only thing I would add is, is for the condition, for the, the deliveries from 12 P to 5 a.m., I think you should just put that in there.
Yeah, because I could change, if it changes ownership, just to make it consistent with the other.
I agree with that.
But just to put it in there.
You, you ready for the motion?
I guess I have to do.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the modification of prior special permit for AMG Retail I L L C at 286 Main Street for a special condition of approval to change hours of operation with the condition of prohibiting deliveries between the hours of midnight and 5 a.m.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, it's passed unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Alright. Now we get to go to the public hearings. Let's see here. Okay, so thank you, everyone, for your patience. So we have three items that will be coming before us under public hearing portion. The structure is similar to what you've heard already. The applicant presents to us, Commissioners ask questions, and then we turn it over to the public for any comments, questions, concerns. And then if we're satisfied, we close the public hearing and then decide on a vote. So we have one item from Trump Incorporated. It's actually a continuation from last time. Alright, thank you. So I'm gonna.
Evening members of the commission, for the record, Will Walter, professional engineer with Alfred Benish and Company. I'm the engineer of record on the project. With me tonight is Jim Becker. He's the architect on the project. We've got Peter Daniel, who's the owners representative. If there's any questions for him, and with us online is Noel Jenkins. He's with B B and E and they're the construction managers. So if there's any questions about construction, I'm sure he'll be more than happy to answer those questions. So, yeah, we were here a couple of weeks ago and this is a 45,000 square foot, give or take, building addition. There were three items of concern. The last time we were here, there was the question of the bump out of the building on the north side. Would that impact the, the existing sidewalk? There was a question of the, the cross connection with the main drainage line in Connecticut Water's concerns. And there was also the question of light potentially coming out of the north side of the building. Since that last meeting, we have revised our plans. There was probably 25 or so staff comments. We've revised the plans. We resubmitted them to the staff a few days ago. They've, they've reviewed those comments. I had a discussion with Bruce Seer today. He has probably three or four additional comments that are very, very minor and, and we're certainly willing to accept those as conditions. And he's, he's willing to do that as well. So I'm gonna briefly go through the, the three items that were concerns to this commission and then we'll be respectfully requesting an approval with conditions. So you can see on the screen, there's the overall site. There's the, in the red highlight is the approximate location of the building addition. Shannon, if you go, go to the next slide, please. So now, north is to the left in this plan. It's, it's difficult to see the four-foot bump out on the left side, which is the north side at this scale, but essentially there's a, there's a four-foot bump out for the building there. And you can see the green space between the, between the, the proposed building and the existing sidewalk. And we've got, you know, 10 or 12 feet there. So you can see that that existing sidewalk back there is not going to be impacted by this bump out. That was one of the, the questions we had last time. Go to the next slide, please. So the next thing we, the other thing we talked about was Connecticut Water. I've, I've drawn some highlights in here. The yellow is highlighting the main storm line that flows from the left, which is north. And it flows south and it takes a few turns and eventually makes its way into the existing detention basin, which is on the right-hand side. I've highlighted in blue and bubbled it, that is the location of our underground infiltration system. Originally, I had a series of dry wells there, but through working with the town staff, we've revised that. I agree, it's a better solution. We've done some test pits out there, so we know where groundwater is. We're staying above the groundwater. And essentially, you can see where the highlighted blue comes out to the right from that underground infiltration system. That's where it connects to the main storm system. Where the pipe comes out is probably about six or seven feet above the pipe of that main storm system. We had a great meeting, Shannon and Bruce and I with Connecticut Water. We went through everything. I'm not gonna avoid all the details. The town indicated that, that they were okay with not having a backflow preventer, which is something that I, I thought, I felt it was not necessary. Connecticut Water agrees that it's not necessary if we can show with a hydraulic analysis of that main pipe that water will never get up to that level. You know, it's, it's probably gonna take us a day or two to do that analysis. It's on our docket to do it this week. And so what we're requesting is that if we can show with that hydraulic analysis to the satisfaction of the town and Connecticut Water that there will not be a backup into that infiltration system in the 100-year storm, we're requesting that we will not have to put a backflow preventer. If we can't show that or if our analysis shows that it is gonna back up, then, then we'll put a, a backflow preventer on that line and just, we're requesting that as an approval. If we do have to, we'll work with the town to make sure it's done to their, their satisfaction. And the last thing, Shannon, next slide, please. I'm gonna have Mr. Becker come up and this is a view of a rendering. And this is a, a view of a rendering of the north side of the building.
Hi, Jim Becker, Tech Town Architects, Hartford, Connecticut. I, I'm working with Barca Leibinger, who is the, the design architect there in Berlin, Germany. And they just wrote up a little, I'll, I'll read what they, a little synopsis of what they had to say about the um, the window on the north facade. Barca Leibinger, working with Trump Campus in Farmington, took a, took his first step finishing the Customer Technology Center, a freestanding pavilion. Um, responding to the landscape pond and neighborhood buildings. That was back in like nineteen ninety-nine. Given, giving industrial facilities and work spaces human scale and comfort to be a place to work is, uh, is one of the, the key issues of our practice. Plans and facade therefore reflect the use of daylight, first to reduce the use of artificial light during day, uh, during the daylight, during daytime, sorry, as much as possible. And second, to give humans a good sense of orientation inside the building. Designing the new addition to Building Two, we went to stay, we wanted to stay with the qualities we developed in our previous projects as campus, on the campus, using the same facade materials, window sizes, and keeping the scale of the elevations. Regarding the north facade ex, extension, we need to join a full-height brick wall with a horizontal, so the brick wall is the, is the new um, the new addition with a horizontal facade of brick, metal siding, and at the top, a window from um the existing building number two. To preserve the architecture of existing and to split the new form from the old, we think it's necessary to have a gap using a full-height window. But this also goes with the minimum benefits of daylight for workspace as mentioned above. So we, we've talked with um Trump and this portion of the building will be, is in a paint shop. Um, there's an exit door incorporated into this, into this window. It's an emergency exit. Um, and this portion of the building will only be get single shift. Um, so, you know, whatever, it was seven to four or something like that. And um, the lights will go out at that time. There won't be any, any daylight coming out of them. Um, it, for this particular, for this particular window. So, anything else, Peter? Sure.
So, Peter Daniel with Trump, been, uh, was it one of them? One eleven Hyde Road. Um, so yeah, at the north end, as Jim said, that's gonna be housing, paint shop. And as of now, we only run one shift, um, and it's gonna stay the same. And typically, because we like to reduce our energy load, we, you know, basically lights turn off when nobody's around. So in any, in any of the, any of the offices, the manufacturing facility, use the lights, uh, turn off automatically at certain times. So this one, I mean, four o'clock, it may shut off at five o'clock, um, not exactly sure, but definitely won't go past, you know, by like six o'clock. I mean, because it's just, we're just gonna waste energy. If nobody's in there, we turn lights off. So same with the parking lot. Yeah.
No, Seth, or, sorry.
Um, so like I had said, uh, we're respectfully requesting approval with the, the conditions, the, the few conditions that the uh, the Bruce had um, had mentioned in his memo. Um, and with that, we're more than happy to take any questions at this time.
All right, thank you. All right, Matt.
So, yeah, just quick on the, so the window, right, it's good for the workers inside the building during the day. You want natural light for them inside. And you're saying, this is only a single shift, so the residents who live in the area, there's no light emanating from these windows because no one's gonna be there. Is that, how to think about this space in the window itself? We're not changing the um material of the window from last week?
No, we, we did talk about putting a shade up, um, and that's still a possibility, if that's a condition. Um, we just felt that because there, you know, it's only gonna be a single shift, the lights are gonna be turning off. It probably wasn't necessary.
No, I mean, I got it from a worker's perspective, the, the natural light inside, just thinking about, you know, even in the winter, right? When it gets, when it gets, um, the sun sets early, just thinking about the, the, the neighborhood. So I don't have a shade or I don't know what else, thanks, but that, that's an interesting concept.
Yeah, because this, this is really the only natural light coming into that one space. We, we kept the whole other part of it, you know, brick wall.
That makes sense. Um, no other questions?
Thank you, Mike. Patrick?
Uh, is it possible that in the future that it does go from one shift to a double shift? And then that you would require lighting and now that would become an issue?
Um, I mean, it's always a possibility, but I would say that the paint shop, um, that I've, since I've been there for twenty years, it's been one shift since I've been there. So um, they're increasing capacity. So I find it, it's probably unlikely they're gonna go to a second shift.
Okay. Right.
So.
Okay, and then this question, I think it's for Mr. Walter. Um, you mentioned something about, so the backflow was an issue. Um, and you mentioned something, so it's an infiltrator system, right? What was it before that?
So it was dry wells, a series of open bottom dry wells.
Oh, okay. So what's the difference exactly?
So the dry wells are about a five-foot diameter, uh, open concrete structure with holes in the side and stone on the bottom. And they go down about five or six feet. I had six or seven of those. Now it's a, it's a half-moon plastic system that's open. It sits on stone. So that whole system is able to come up a little bit higher above the groundwater. I mean, we're always above the groundwater, but it's able to come up. It's more linear and it actually provides more volume. And it provides, we're providing greater than that first inch that's falling on the, the rooftop of the building, which is what the staff asked us to do.
Okay, so it's not as high, so it's, it's shorter, therefore bringing it up, getting it out of the groundwater. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. No other questions?
Thank you. All right, Liz?
Um, a, a question about those lights. Um, are they on a, an automatic, automated system where someone walks into the room, the lights go on, or is it a switch?
So um, in all the buildings, there's, they're on a timer.
Okay.
And they go off. Like I work in one of the other buildings and at uh, usually at like six o'clock, all the lights turn off, except for some minimal lighting. Um, and if you do walk around, they, depending where you are, they will turn on, but in the, in the main manufacturing building, they usually don't.
They don't, okay. And so it's not a, a watchman uh walks through with?
No, it's all automated.
Doing their rounds at midnight and two, and all of a sudden they come on and stay on for ten minutes.
No, no. And, and there's gonna be, usually nobody's gonna be going in there at, at, after, you know, five o'clock or so. So the shifts are from seven, it's actually from seven to three thirty, that's our first shift. And then maybe get a little bit overtime, so I'd say maybe four, four thirty, you know, so it's, and everything's automated. We have everything connected. We have a Siemens automation system that controls everything in the buildings.
Okay, thank you. No other questions? No, okay. How about you, James?
Um, just a more question for Shannon. If they were to increase to a second shift, and we would more than likely want to have a shade to block the light. What, what's the process around that to, to Patrick's question?
Uh, they would increase to a second shift and we probably wouldn't know about it unless there was complaints from the neighbors about the lighting.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have, I don't have an issue with the, with there not being a shade as currently presented. But if we're not gonna know, you know, but I guess over twenty years, twenty years of experience, maybe it's, it's okay to just roll with it. But I just, I was curious more about the, the process and anything else. If there was a complaint, would then we?
So if there was a complaint, then we'd have to follow up with it. But I do have a question. So is there security? So there's other areas of the building and other buildings that there's security lighting that is left on. So there's, you know, not all the lights, but security lighting is left on overnight in some of the buildings. And there's also cleaning staff that comes in. And they're in at like nine o'clock at night. And we, so there are other buildings that, but Hyde Road, I think it's Building Four, that uh, or the Training Center.
Training Center's Building Three.
Okay, so that one, it, the lights, we, we have received calls on a regular basis on that one and have to, have been in touch with John Meska on that.
Okay.
So if there's security, if there's security lighting that'll be in and part of that and/or cleaning staff, then I think the best way to go is to put the shade in. And the other question I had is, this rendering is not clear as to where the window is. I, I can see a, a brick and I can see, is it this small column here? And I, I'm not really sure, this, this, the rendering has an appearance, if it's all, all blocked.
The brick is the dark piece.
Correct.
There's a wall.
So correct, the four feet that it extends out from the.
That's a block wall, and then this surface right here, that's the, that's the window, the question, and this door on the bottom.
Okay, so it does face north. It faces north. It's blocked by this small four-foot wall, but it does this, so it's that portion. How wide is that?
It's seven feet wide.
Okay, so seven-foot-wide glass from ground to roof.
Yes.
No more questions?
All right, how about you, Mike?
No questions.
All right, um. We talked about a planting buffer, right? That's not changing. So we, one of the things that was confusing last time was whether or not we have the feet, the fifteen, seventeen feet or like. I know Mike Agarwal has mentioned that he drives there or has been there and he didn't feel like we had the space.
I.
Was that confirmed that?
Believe that what's being referred to, hang on a second. Hang on, why the computer regenerates? I believe that was this area, so the, the distance between the existing edge of building, which you can see back here, and the sidewalk edge.
Do you have, sir, again, we can't see it really good over here. Sorry.
So, the existing edge of building.
Yeah.
Sidebar.
Yeah.
Not so smart.
Existing edge of building, sidebar. The new edge of building is out four feet, and so it's just four feet this way.
Yeah.
So your sidebar is not.
It's not impacted.
Right, so there's, if there's, there's most of the grass is over there.
All right. And um, just think about this. Uh, I think uh, it's the, the lighting, right? We know which way it's facing. We know how far it's coming out. Um, yes, so we do have this pretty significant window on the west, okay, up west-north. Um, and Shannon, that, um, you and Bruce are comfortable with the hydro test?
And uh, we are uh, fine with that condition, that if the hydraulics support that the backflow preventer is not needed, then, then that's fine. It does not need to be installed.
Okay, and uh, applicant can work with town staff?
Town staff and C T water.
Okay. All right, um, I almost said what my question, sorry about the way they came out. But all right, since this is a public hearing, um, Shannon, if you can reach out to people online also, but um, uh, this is the time where the public can come in front of us and ask questions of the applicant, make comments in favor or opposition of this project.
Okay, I'll ask for anyone that has called in online. If anyone wishes to speak regarding this application, please raise your hand using Zoom. Uh, the feature in Zoom, and you will be identified to address the commission. Adam, sure, there are no hands raised.
Okay.
And just make sure we ask for anyone present.
Yes, I'm sorry, anyone present? Uh, do you have any questions? Nope, okay, I'm getting shit.
Head shake.
That's not, yes, okay, good with that. Before I close the public hearing, commissioners, any final questions?
Shannon, can you just show us on the, the GIS, the, the parcel again?
Of course.
Thank you. And then I'm, I'm good after this.
Stay out for it. So Johnson Ave, Hyde Road, New Britain Ave, coming into the top, Hyde. So this is the building in question with the expansion area being located in this vicinity next to, basically, they, where the number one is on the screen is where the expanded building will be located.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, I'm just gonna say a follow-up to that, and so the I'm a little turned around, so Hyde Road is to the north?
Correct.
Okay, and so I see. So then it's across like the New Britain Avenue area, that's where, how, there are um, private houses, correct?
Correct, there's some residents to the north in this area.
Okay.
But up further.
But uh, so there's one right at the intersection. There is one right at the intersection of New Britain and Hyde.
Okay. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, when, as I saw you reading through, so have these been all addressed here?
Sorry, the comments you have, I know we need.
Yeah.
I was gonna.
So the items for consideration?
Yep.
Okay, confirm there are no, so um, Mr. Walter, do you wanna, we're just gonna run through these.
That's fine, I wasn't sure if you already had the.
No, I think we're ready, but just for the record, uh, confirm there are no changes to the existing pant, planting buffer along Hyde Road?
Correct.
Confirm construction sequence and designated construction material storage area. I'm gonna go back to your PDF. My technical skills are a little lacking tonight. There we go. So, construction sequence and designated construction storage area. With this, we had construction storage down in this vicinity, correct?
Correct.
To the south of the construction zone. There'll be nothing, no construction storage and no construction activity to the north of the building.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, construction materials, so that's the second one. Construction materials shall not be stored in such a manner as to impact the root system for the buffer along Hyde Road.
Correct.
Construction dumpsters shall be located to the south of the existing building.
Correct.
Confirm no additional lighting on the north side of the building, so there's no exterior building lights.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, it says conform, confirm no windows on the north side of the building. We've already noted that there's one seven-foot-wide window, um, so we're set there. And then address engineering comments to the satisfaction of the town engineering department. I'd just leave that as a condition, um, if you would, please. And uh, then Bruce and I can finalize all those elements.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Questions, yep.
Thank you. All right, you have one more, no?
No, good.
Okay, so, all right, at this point, I will close the public hearing on the application from Trump Incorporated. All right, um. Let's see here, um, we need a motion before discussion, right?
Correct.
So we need a motion and a second, please, before we discuss.
And then we can add the conditions after.
Or you can add them, you're welcome to add them as part of your motion, if you would like to.
Well, I'll just comment. I think, I think maybe we all agree, I assume, with the, the engineering comments and hydraulic report. Like, we want that. I'm not sure, I don't know where we're at with the win, the window and how to think about shading or not, right?
This question, right?
That's part of discussion. Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's what I was gonna say.
You can always amend them, so you can make the motion, discuss, and then amend the motion, and then a second, and that's fine.
Sounds like it's coming from this side.
Yeah.
They're working on it.
I see the notes over there.
Yeah, I, um, so I make a motion to approve the application for special permit um, for site, for special permit for site plan approval for Trump Inc. Um, for expansion of manufacturing building in a CR zone.
Second?
Second.
I don't know, I thought we were.
And now this, well, discussion, let's, let's talk about this, oh my gosh.
Okay.
I know we have gone longer than this. What is going on?
It's one.
All right, so uh, definitely, we had some questions about the lighting or the pollution or neighbors, right? One, one of the charges we have as commissioner. One, one of the charges we have as commissioners is to, to think about the impacts to neighborhood. Do we want a condition? Um, the window? Some kind of shade or?
I.
Yeah, I would, I would say, yeah.
Oh, yes, sorry, I was like.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm leaning that way, it sounded like the applicant was open to that and I think uh, we can shade it for those after hours, especially here in New England in the winter, it gets dark. It's dark at four o'clock, so I'm comfortable with that.
So this would be like after five, like what, what would that look like? They mentioned that, um, after six technically, right? Nobody would be in that area, but do we want to do it sooner?
I mean, I think if a shade isn't installed, right? And it's open and there's no complaints, I mean, if there is a complaint, they'll probably use a shade that's already installed.
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah, I guess, I just ask for install, that'll show on the building plans, we'll see it and that's fine.
Perfect, okay, so, yep.
So I'm comfortable with that.
Basically, it needs to be activated after sunset, right? It needs to be activated sunset to sunrise if there's gonna be lighting in the building.
Right, and if there's no lighting, it's, it's open, there was.
Exactly.
Yeah, that seems like a very reasonable, uh, a reasonable idea, because I could just imagine, as I said, you know, if someone walks in there and the whole place lights up and that's a lot of light.
Mike, you're good with this condition?
Uh, I think putting the shade in is acceptable, I'm not a huge fan of telling them how to operate it at the moment. I, I like having the shade and we can always go back to it if Shannon ultimately feels a complaint, but I don't support necessarily putting restrictions on when they use it or do not. Um, again, if the commission wants to go differently, I could be swung.
I mean, we did hear that there have been complaints in the past in a different building, right?
On a different building that's closer to Hyde Road, yes. And it's used more as an office space as a training unit.
Okay.
So there's, there's a lot more.
Staff and lights.
Yeah, it's a different, different function for that building.
But I am in support of having the shade in the construction documents.
Are we good with just the shade or do we need to do the sun sets on like?
Not, I'm.
Shade is good?
Yeah, I think so.
Right, um, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I agree, I think if we get the shade installed, I think that is, it's there and then.
And I'll say this too, I mean, I don't necessarily anticipate many complaints coming either way, just because of where the location is. You know, when you pull up the G I, G I S, it looks like the, the residential area is a little bit further away. Um, so just having the shade there will be good, just in case we do get complaints and they can, they already have it installed and we're in good shape.
There's a, yeah, something in place, exactly. All right, and then our, we talked about our engineering comments being possibly part of the.
Yeah.
Motion, everyone good, okay?
Yes, thank you.
And then, uh, the hydro, like, excuse me, hydraulic analysis, um, are we including that in the motion? That, okay. Anything else, I did not hear anything else. You know, we're good?
Good.
All right, Patrick, would you like to modify that?
Yeah.
All right.
So I will amend my motion, uh, to include the following conditions, that the applicant provide a hydraulic analysis proving that the stormwater will not back up um, in a hundred year storm in order for the backflow to be eliminated, I guess, and then second condition, a shade be installed on any window on the north side of the building, which a seven foot one is proposed. Um, and that all, and that all engineering comments are addressed at the satisfaction of the town engineering department prior to building permit.
Okay. What was my second?
Second.
Want me to vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous, thank you for coming back, we appreciate the clarification, thank you. Okay, no, that was good. You took your time, it was perfect, all right, um. Our next public hearing, uh, item in front of us is an application for fourteen hens from Amber and Michael Spirito. Are, oh, you're here, okay, great, come on, come on up, if you can identify yourself, give us your address, thank you. And thank you for your patience, sorry you had to sit through.
Hello, uh, Michael, Amber Spirito, at Seven Orchard Road.
Okay, thank you.
So we wanted to get an application for some hens, uh, this way we don't have neighbors complaining, so.
Okay. Do you have like a picture where they're gonna like be or?
Um.
Or it's in here?
So, yeah, we just did a little layout, so give a backstory. We moved from Newington, uh, I don't know, like five years ago and we had hens there. Just moved the coop there, didn't know Farmington had any restrictions, so we had a neighbor. She had chickens, someone complained with her, she went through the process and then she called on us. So, um, so I end up getting rid of them because it was in the middle of December and, uh, I was like, ah, you know, with the holidays coming up, so now, five years later, I had the coop back there and everything, so. Five years later, my kids got a little older and they're like, they want the chickens and they're eating a lot, so. I figured it could save us some, so.
All right, so, all right, so you, uh, your request is, um, for us to allow fourteen hens and you already have a coop?
Yes.
Okay, enclosed or?
Yep, all enclosed. It, it, the coop is actually, it's all enclosed, they stay in the coop. And then there's another fence back there, because we have a whole pool, but they don't roam. They're in, in there, the other fence around the coop is kind of keep the predators away, so it's like a double protection.
Uh, I don't think there's photos I could bring up, I can.
Yeah, sorry, we didn't.
The aerials, the Seven Orchard.
Yeah, just, yeah, okay, sure, we'll be good, thank you.
We're right.
Street names are coming on.
Yeah, we're right against Route nine, like, we back up.
Right, that's.
Yep, the top of it.
This one?
Yep, right where that.
Without, without street names or a number.
What is it?
The number, the street names aren't showing up.
So, yeah, you can see the pool in the back and then, well, yep, that's the coop. So it's maybe from front to back, you know, the long way, maybe fifteen feet wa, uh, long and four feet wide.
All right, well, good, yeah, okay, all right, commissioners, questions? Um, Matt?
Um, could you, uh, just one more time, describe the chicken coop to me again?
So it's a, um, so it's about fifteen feet wide.
Okay.
Um, twelve, or long, I'm sorry, long.
Right.
Um, maybe twelve of it is a run, so it's all open and they have the run and the rest of it, I don't know, whatever, is all enclosed, so they go up there at night to roost.
Got it, okay. And we'd just be using the eggs for personal use.
Oh, yeah.
And selling it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I know it's a lot of chickens, but in the past, like, I've always got twelve and then like three of them die before they even get older. So that's why I just shop for fourteen and see how many survive.
That was my other question, is how do you, how do you pick fourteen?
Yeah.
Twelve, got it.
Yeah, like I wanted twelve, you know, so to get like maybe a dozen a day.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Got it. Nah, no, no, there's no questions.
All right, how about you, Patrick?
Uh, so you, you were mentioning that one of the neighbors was complaining, right?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Not complaining, she.
She had chickens in the neighborhood, they were running the whole neighborhood, so, and I don't know, I, I came to the meeting like five years ago. Um, this woman has a lot of complaints against her, so she just likes to complain on everyone else, so. Um, she never kept her chickens in the coops and they went to another neighbor's yard on the other side. I had no problems with her chickens, because I had chickens, I was like, I don't care.
Right.
Um, they went in her yard and her dog, I think, killed one, they, they were greyhounds. And, um, they're, you know, prey dogs, so, um, that was the issue with that neighbor. So he called to complain and then she turned around, because I think she thought I complained, so. But she still owns a house next to us, uh, she rents it.
Okay, so now, so one, one of the houses that we see in the picture to the right or?
Uh, yeah, to the right.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
It's documented in the agenda review for you.
What's that?
It's in the agenda review.
Oh, it is?
No, 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 that's okay, I know, but just so, I mean, you wouldn't necessarily put two and two together, but it's the same residence that's noted in the timing in the agenda review.
Okay, um, and then, um, so, so she, she was not really complaining, you know, over.
No, not, she was more, she just turned around.
Something else in it, yeah.
Yeah, like, I got caught, I'm gonna.
Yeah, 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 okay, um, yeah, no, other than that, no hens, uh, uh, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
No, yeah, no roosters.
I don't own chickens, so.
Yeah. And I'd be honest with you, we had a rooster the last time that we've, when we got the small chickens and I ended up getting rid of it, you know, because someone, we, we knew had a farm and she's like, I'll take it, I'm like, good. So to spare, get, you know, really getting rid of it, so that she took it, so.
All right, thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, Liz, questions?
Um, a question, how tall is the coop?
Um.
Like six.
Yeah, yeah, it's enough for, I'm a short guy, so it's enough for me to walk in.
Uh huh.
And then it slopes downward and I can't.
Oh, okay.
Maybe only like six foot tall in the front and it slopes back towards my pool.
Okay.
So it's open on the neighbor's side.
Okay, and so then they get the romp and play in there.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Time, okay. My one comment is if you get all those fourteen chickens, start giving eggs to your neighbors.
I know.
That's the way to make.
Except for one.
Okay, um, great questions, great questions, all right, Liz, you all set?
I am all set.
All right, James?
No questions.
And Mike?
No questions.
And now, how do you dispose of like waste and you have a?
Uh, it will compost it and I have a garden, um, on the, the left side of my property, that's a garden area, so.
Um, okay.
That's what is gonna be fertilizer.
All right, all right, um, this is, thank you, all right, uh, this is a public hearing, um, so if there's anyone, um, on the line, Shannon, that wishes to speak in favor? Opposed?
Certainly. All right, yeah. Uh, so good evening, if anyone has called in to Zoom to speak regarding this matter for Seven Orchard, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you will be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone's called in from the public to speak regarding Seven Orchard Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Where, there's. Nothing, it is very quiet, Madam Chair.
All right.
And I'm assuming there's equally quiet here.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought your neighbor was gonna show up.
Oh, my gosh, okay, um. At this point, I'm gonna close the public hearing, excuse me, all right, um. I'm gonna motion in a second, please.
Make a motion, uh, to accept, uh, the application for special permit to raise fourteen hens for property located at Seven Orchard Road in R twenty zone by Amber and Michael Spirito.
Go ahead and.
I'll second.
All right, discussion?
Great idea. Enjoy your chicken.
Is there, is there any for the conditions?
Yeah. Yeah.
For, you know.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
Yeah, for.
Forgot about the condition.
No, no, that's, that's okay, so, yeah, so fourteen, but, um, I know in the past, and I, I don't know, uh, Shannon, if it makes sense, I know we have zoning enforcement officials, but, uh, we typically would. Okay, sorry, I'm hearing things, we typically would put like a one year, um, callback if there's anyone complaining, because want to do that.
I mean, is that pretty much on that on every?
I don't think it, I just want to say we did that before, but we have the process in place, right? If there's a problem.
Correct, so the zoning enforcement happens organically if it's needed. Um, generally, it's either neighbors or our animal control officer gets in touch with us, so I don't really think that one year is necessary, but the condition, the no roosters and the limit to fourteen would be helpful.
Yeah, sure.
Do you, so you're good, no roosters, fourteen chickens, okay, you can just modify your motion, sorry, thank you.
I'd like to modify my motion, um, to add the conditions that there shall be no roosters and that should, there should, there shall no be, be no more than fourteen chickens and at one time.
What was my second?
That's.
Second, all right, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, you are all set, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That, if he is just one, one time.
Yes, one time, that's it.
Yeah.
Yep, you're all set, you'll get a letter from Sandy, um, finalizing the approval, okay? And then, thanks very much.
Yeah, that's about it.
You need, yeah, you need a new half. All right, are we all set, Shannon, yeah?
And we got one more.
Okay, well, yeah, I wasn't.
Yeah, yeah, we're all set, but we do have one more.
Yeah, yeah, all right, so then we're truly all set. You're right. Yes, I, yep, uh, yes, I'll, I'll mention it also, thank you. So, uh, the last public hearing item in front of us is an application from Patricia Revel and David Donaldson. It's for an expansion of a home at Seventeen Pinnacle Ridge Road and Liz is, uh, refusing herself from this application and, uh, I'm assuming someone online is online, excuse me to?
Uh, yes.
Phil Revel is on, so.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Yep, go ahead, you can introduce yourself, uh, your, uh, business address is fine for the record. And then I've got your presentation slides up on the screen, I'm happy to screen, uh, scroll through them as you're ready.
Great, thanks, Shannon. Hi, everyone, I'm Phil Revel with Winslow Architects out of, uh, eighty-nine Massachusetts Avenue, Arlington, Massachusetts. Um, and I'm presenting on behalf of Patricia Revel and David Donaldson, uh, with their expansion of their home at Seventeen Pinnacle Ridge Road. If you want to just go to the next slide, Shannon, so the existing house is a kind of mid-century modern house. It's fifteen hundred square feet with a detached garage that's just shy of about six hundred, yeah, right where the cursor is, six hundred square feet. And you can see the existing line that goes through the property kind of, yep, right where Shannon's highlighting, um, is the seventy-five foot setback ridge line protection zone, uh, setback. Uh, if you go to the next slide, you'll see what we're proposing. So what we're hoping to do is expand the existing garage to hold three cars and connect it to the house so that the residents don't need to go outside after they park their car to go back inside. And while we're doing that, we're hoping to add a second story of usable space, you know, it's a pretty small house, it's fifteen hundred square feet, so that overflow space will serve their four kids when they come to visit. Pat is an avid yogi, so it's a yoga studio as well, um, and then an office. Uh, out the back, you'll see a deck that we're proposing to take advantage of the great views. Um, and what's highlighted in red is the area that, you know, sits within the seventy-five foot setback zone. And in that kind of paler color, they're hoping to take overflow storage space, uh, and kind of screen it behind there, so there'd be a pad beneath the deck. So impervious surface wise, so that's what the calculations in red represent per zoning bylaw, twenty-six point one point A. There's a provision that less than forty percent of the area within the seventy-five and a hundred and fifty foot setback be, uh, impervious surface and we're way beneath that, you know, prior to and with the additions. So you can see the percentages there, we've got, um, percentage of proposed plus existing impervious area within the a hundred and fifty foot setback zones, eleven point two percent up from the existing ten point two, because, you know, this provision was made after this existing house was here and, and like I said, within that seventy-five foot buffer zone. So that, that, uh, the next slide has, I think, elevations for you guys to take a look at what we're proposing. Our floor plans, you know, here's the garage. Pretty straightforward, the storage area in the back, that's the pad in the back, they want to put wheelbarrows and ladders. Here's the studio floor plan with office, it's pretty straightforward, a pretty open space. And then this is the roof plan, I doubt you guys are too concerned with that. And then here's the elevation, so it's a pretty modern addition. But we didn't really want to mess with the original aesthetic of the kind of mid-century deck home, so we took a more modern approach to the new structure. And I think that should round it out, so I would, uh, be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
All right, thank you. All right, Matt, questions?
Y- y- yeah, I mean, the, the, there's several staff comments, so I'm, I'm not sure just how to address those or Shannon, should we?
Yeah, we actually, we're gonna do this, they use the right.
Calculations to be, you know, all that.
No, so, um, Mr. Revel had sent me an email earlier today, running through, he copied them in and put them in and read. Uh, it just, it didn't arrive really in time to share with you folks. Just, let's just run through them, so get it on the record. So, first, first one is the calculation using the hundred and fifty foot setback envelope and the seventy-five foot envelope, which is the previous coverage. Um, which we just, he just reviewed, um, so that was the calculations, he just reviewed the eleven percent and the ten percent. And that was within the hundred and fifty, so that's compliant. Um, and then Mr. Revel confirmed no tree removal, please?
Confirmed, there's one by Burnham Shrub that you see there, they're gonna relocate to a lower planted, but. Confirmed, there's one by burn and shrub that you see there, they're gonna relocate to a lower plant bed, but it's, there's no tree removal.
Okay. And, um, number three, confirm compliance with section G one through five.
Confirmed.
Um, item one, staff item, uh, staff comment, item one. Twenty-six F six is consideration for the commission when reviewing a special permit, it does not change the setback to seventy-five, that's really an FYI for you. The building's already in the seventy-five, and so he did add the hundred and fifty foot to the application. Uh, the hundred and fifty foot is the regulatory limit, the seventy-five, when it's an existing lot, or, um, either an existing lot of record. Or an existing home on an existing lot where this ridge line protection came in after the fact. Right, then the commission has some flexibility with how they, um, implement the regulation. Uh, regardless, it, it complies, and it is, with this provision, it allows that work within this, the seventy-five foot area. Okay. Um, item two was items one through three still need to be submitted, we've just discussed those above. Uh, with respect to item three, the plans indicate that these are compliant, however, the applicant should confirm, he already just confirmed. Show the hundred and fifty foot ridge line protection setback, it's shown on the plan we just reviewed. Shift addition to the east to avoid impact to the root system to the forty inch white oak. The drip line of the tree is within the footprint of the deck and the building addition, Mr. Revel, could you address that, please?
Sure, so, um, while we would love to shift it as far away as possible, we're kind of hedged in with the amount of available. Land that we have to put this three-car garage, A, back on top of the existing foundation, so as to minimize the disruption to the existing property. But also, when we designed this, we were really, you know, out there, looking around at everything, planning out the size of the deck. And we thought that it would be a great actual feature to have part of the oak hang over the deck as a natural shading device. Um, so, between trying to minimize the footprint of the addition itself, while ensuring that it can fit in the staircase and the three-car garage. And trying to take advantage of the oak as a shading device, we, uh, positioned that, the addition as we did.
Right, so based on that, it sounds like the foundation, there isn't foundation excavation, the deck overhangs into where the, the drip line is of the tree. But the building itself does not, is that correct?
Correct, as far as we could tell, yes.
Okay. Uh, next item was, tree protection fence shall be installed at the drip line of the oak to avoid construction stock piling in this area.
Correct, that'll be provided.
Thank you. Seven perimeter erosion control shall be included, silt fence and silt sock. Erosion control along the eastern edge of the work shall be installed prior to the start of excavation, not solely in the event of rain.
Correct, that'll be provided.
Okay, number eight, site plan shall reflect all site improvements, including the patio stairs for the deck, the new driveway. To align with the garage and removal of driveway encroachment onto neighboring property to the cell.
Yeah, we will, um, be working through the plans to further develop them, and we'll make sure to include all of this, definitely.
Okay, so item eight could be a condition of approval.
Yeah.
Uh, as with the tree protection fence, item six. Studio above the garage shall be for personal use only, classes of any kind require a separate special permit.
Correct.
And that should be a condition of approval if the commission is so inclined. Excuse me?
Thank you for having this document.
You're welcome, well, thank you to the applicant for putting it in writing and answering everything in writing was helpful.
Yeah, very, very helpful, um, okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, alright, so, back to questions.
Uh, yeah, no, I don't have any questions, I mean, that was, we went through all of that.
That was really good, okay, um, definitely answered a lot of my manuals, right?
Yes.
It's, it's good. Those questions?
No, I, I think it's been lots of the concerns.
Oh, I'm gonna, sorry. Yes, no, recused.
No, that's.
So there's no comment. Nothing at all, thank you.
Sorry, erase, whatever you need to erase, thank you, I'm sorry about that.
No, uh, no questions. No questions.
Like, okay. Wow, thank you, Shannon, for being here.
Um, I do have one more question, so when you say, uh, when we do make the motion, can we say as presented, seeing that we went through item by item and he?
Sure, Sandy and I will articulate it in writing for the condition.
Okay.
Yes, Patrick is in a hurry tonight.
No, no, it's not that.
No, it's, it's, it's a lot, but, uh, it is in writing already, and we did get the applicant.
Correct.
To, uh, accept.
Verbally, verbally commented on each of them, correct.
Thank you, Sandy and Shannon, alright, um, I do not have any, uh, new questions, so let's turn it over to the public. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak in favor or, uh, position of this application?
So if anyone's called in to speak regarding this matter, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And I'm sure there are no hands raised, and, um, I will note for the record that there's no one from the public of, with interest in this application this evening. In person.
Alright, any last minute questions for the applicant? We're good, okay, alright, the public hearing portion is closed right now, and I need a motion and a second before discussion.
Like to make a motion to approve the application for a special permit for expansion of home in the ridge line protection area. For property located at Seventeen Pinnacle Ridge Road, R forty zone by Patricia Revel and David Donaldson.
As since presented?
As presented.
Yes, okay, and a second, please.
Second.
Okay, discussion. We're good with what we talked, yeah, pretty straightforward, applicant was, okay, alright, we're ready to vote, okay, all in favor of this application?
Hi.
Alright, it's unanimous, thank you, Mr. Revel, for staying on the line.
Thank you all, have a great evening.
You too. And, uh, thank you, Sandy and Shannon again.
Yeah.
Alright, planners' report, or actually, you want me to do the minutes, and then?
There's, there's no planners' report, um, no formal planners' report for this evening.
Thank you, and, um, the final, um, item in front of us is, um, the approval of minutes from May ninth. Who would like to make a motion and second?
I'll make a motion. To approve the minutes of the May ninth twenty-two, excuse me, two thousand twenty-two town planning and zoning commissions meeting.
Second.
Hey, all in favor?
Hi.
Alright, meeting is adjourned, thank you.